Commissioners, it's a delight to have everyone listening today. We're briefing today for the May 20 meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, and we're going to have the budget presentation for Forsyth Community College right off the bat from Dr. Janet Spriggs, who is a delightful president. She knows exactly what she's doing, and she knows what she has to do where money is concerned. So if Dr. Spriggs is here, Dr. Spriggs, we will introduce you and can't wait to see what you're doing with all those dollars.
Thank you so much, Chairman Wyler. I appreciate that very nice and kind introduction. Before I share my screen today, I would like to introduce the commissioners to our Vice President and Chief Financial Officer, who should be on your screen as well. She's dialed in remotely with me. Please welcome to Forsyth Tech and our Forsyth County Community, Kizzy Lee. I had the privilege in 2012 to hire Kizzy away from the city of Salisbury and bring her to Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And then she eventually made her way to Winston-Salem State University after I left Rowan Cabarrus. And I've had the privilege and honor for a second time to be able to lure Kizzy away and bring her to Forsyth Tech when we had an opening for a Vice President and a Chief Financial Officer. So Kizzy comes to us with a wealth of experience, and you will be seeing more of her as we move through the budget process. And I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to at least see her on the screen. If it's okay with you, and I will move now to share my screen and see if we can, I hope that you all can now see that. We do have a formal presentation. Wonderful, thank you. We do have a formal presentation for you today. I would like to start off with what I've titled here, as you can see, "The Big Picture Context", because I thought that rather than just coming to you with a request for our budget, it might be helpful if we also shared some of that context with you from which we were able to develop our budget request. As you all know, from what we have experienced together for more than a year now, and through the presentations that I've made to you in the past, COVID-19 has certainly made a significant impact on all of us and on our students as well. While Forsyth Tech never stopped operating, we never sent anyone away, we just sent them away from campus. We did continue to operate throughout the entire COVID-19 pandemic, but we did suffer some challenges as a result of that, and our students primarily suffered the most negative impact as a result of COVID. We did move 95% of our curriculum coursework, those students who are seeking diplomas and degrees and associate degrees and transfer programs. All of that work, about 95% of that curriculum was moved to virtual last March and into early April. And then towards June, we were able to bring back our students to help them finish the clinicals and in-person types of training that they needed for their degree program. However, we still have not yet returned to fully pre-COVID standards for in-person learning. And as a result of that, particularly in our basic skills and continuing education programs, the students that are with us to complete their high school equivalency, or the students who are with us to take short-term workforce certification types of programs to prepare them for the workforce, for skills, for careers, or for upskilling, have suffered the most. Our enrollment for those programs has suffered the most. And last year, we were down for the year, we anticipate being down for the year, only about 2.6% in curriculum enrollment. And I say only about 2.6% because we know that many colleges in our state, but many more colleges across the country are seeing double-digit declines in their curriculum enrollment. So we feel pretty good about the 2.6% decline in curriculum. We saw a rebound last summer, about 9% increase in enrollment in curriculum from 2019 summer. And I think that was the result of so many of the university students being sent home early and wanting to not lose momentum. And so we had a lot of special credit students that came in in the summer and took things like English and math and some of our college transfer courses. In the fall, fall enrollment was steady, our numbers of students were steady, but the FTE, or the Full-Time Equivalent, was down. And so while we had about the same number of students, we did not earn as much Full-Time Equivalent because due to the impact of COVID, so many of our students had to reduce the number of courses that they were able to take. So many of our full-time students reduced to part-time, and that is one of the reasons that our FTE was down. As a reminder, we are paid by the state, our revenues from the state are based on the Full-Time Equivalent. Our spring enrollment was down dramatically in all of those areas, over 5.5% just in curriculum in the spring. Many students who did come back in the fall just simply found it too hard to continue to manage classes that were hybrid or all online while at the same time, they were also taking care of children who still had not returned at the time that the semester started, to in-person learning and to manage the other impacts of the pandemic. So we do believe that as we move back to much more of whatever our new normal is going to look like, and as we open things back up, which we have done significantly over the past couple of months, particularly as the vaccines have been rolled out and as things have started to open up more. So overall, we anticipate that we are going to see an overall decline in budget FTE of about 5.5%. The way the state system office works is that they take the higher of our actual FTE, or the two-year average. And so the two-year average for us overall gives us about a 5.5% decline, which will equate to about $2.1 million in budget revenue from the state unless the General Assembly does in fact give us budget stabilization dollars to mitigate the impact and to hold the colleges harmless for the impact of COVID-19 on our enrollment. So we anticipate that we will receive that budget stabilization money from the state, and that would instead of $2.1 million deficit, it would give us about a $600,000 decline in enrollment in state revenue over last year. We do anticipate also, the other important thing to tell you about on this slide, is that we anticipate returning to normal in fall 2021. We will be in full force again, our staff and faculty back on our campuses, and we do anticipate seeing an increase in our enrollment. We are already with early registrations, up 9% in the number of students who have registered from the same point in time last year. So we are very hopeful for what the fall will bring. That will bring me to the federal stimulus funding. As you all know, we have received two federal stimulus funding packages, and we are awaiting the third. We do know the awarded amount, but we have not received the final award. We have completely extended the Spring 2020 CARES Act funding of just over $5.1 million. Of that, 2.5, almost 2.5 as you see here, was direct student aid, as it was required to be by that federal stimulus act, direct student aid to our students to help them, again, mitigate the impact of job loss and other things that had occurred as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, to help them stay in school. We spent an additional $2.7 million that was primarily on infrastructure for technology. A great portion of that was in helping us extend our technology capabilities so that we could deliver sound and quality learning in a virtual environment. And we also used a portion of that for additional funding to try to help mitigate the impact to students and help them stay in school as well. We were then awarded another $9.8 million in the second federal stimulus funding. Again, $2.466 million of that has to go directly to students, leaving a balance of $7.3 million for institutional support. We have spent a small amount of that money in direct student aid to our students, again, mitigating the impact of COVID. But we have held on to that for a couple of reasons. First of all, we do not know what the state budget will be yet, and we need it to make sure that we reserve the federal money in the event that we do not receive the stabilization dollars and we have a $2.1 million deficit to fill. Because again, we will get a budget that is slated to be reduced, but we anticipate growth in enrollment for next fall. We had been growing in enrollment. We were up over 2.5% prior to COVID-19. So we believe that will continue. We are seeing significant increases in our career and college promise, dual enrollment, FTE with the high schools, with our high school partners. And so we anticipate needing to fill that $2.1 million deficit potentially, if that is what we end up with, and at the same time, needing to serve more students as we rebound from the effects of the pandemic. We also have been notified that through the ARC federal stimulus funding, we will receive $20 million, and 10 million of that will be direct student aid to students, while the other 10 million is for institutional purposes. We do not yet have the guidelines. Both of these previous federal stimulus funding awards have been very restricted. The first one was very restricted. We had some guidelines that were loosened a bit in the second award, but they are designed for us to be able to improve instruction and be able to manage in virtual environments as well as mitigating the impact of the pandemic on our ability to continue to serve students with excellence. We have not received all of the information, or very much information at all, about the final ARC funding. We do know that we have been told we will have until September of 2023 to spend that $20 million. And what we are doing is taking a very strategic approach to make sure that we are maximizing this money to help us weather the rest of the storm and to help us get our students back into school. That is our number-one priority. What can we do to utilize this money most efficiently and effectively to be able to teach more efficiently and effectively, but also to help our students get back to school? So that is the big picture context. I will say that our state budget priorities are for faculty and staff salary increases. Our faculty and staff have not received a salary increase in two years, and so that is a priority that we are working with our General Assembly to notify them and to let them know about that. And we've also asked for money for additional information technology support as well as cybersecurity support to help us ensure that our systems are protected. And finally, about $60 million across the 58 community colleges for budget stabilization to hold our community colleges harmless for the impacts of COVID. With that, I will present to you our budget that Kizzy Lee and her team and I put together and have submitted to the county management, to our county manager and to the budget office. We are not requesting any increase in our contractual services or supplies and materials. In fact, we are hoping to realign money from those categories and put them into personal services or into salaries, which is where we need them the most, for several reasons that I will share with you. The personal services increase that you see here, $740,000, includes a potential 7% salary increase that we would ask would be held in contingency, as is the norm for our county, in anticipation of a possible salary increase from the state for all community college faculty and staff. We treat all of our employees the same, regardless of which funding source covers their salaries and benefits. And right now, the reason we are asking for 7% is because we have been, there are two bills actually, that have been put forth by both the Senate and the House, and both of those bills call for a 7% salary increase for community college staff and faculty. So we believe that there is consensus among the two branches of our state government, and we feel pretty confident in our conversations with our legislators that they do support that salary increase. So we feel pretty good about that. In addition, we also have a request to ask for five additional security officers for our, or I'm sorry, campus police officers, to staff our off-main campus centers. So as you know, our main campus is on Silas Street, but we also have eight other campuses. And we have used contracted security services, but we have moved to a plan where we use very limited contracted services and are having our main campus police officers spread their time between the campuses so that we can provide more safety and security for our faculty, staff, and students at these locations. We do know that over the last few years, campus homicides have occurred at North Carolina A&amp;P, at Winston-Salem State University sadly, at Wake Forest University, and most recently, a couple of years ago now, at UNC Charlotte. In Winston-Salem, we also know that there has been some gain and some increase in gun violence, and we just need to ensure that our students and our staff and faculty are not vulnerable when they are on our campuses. And so that $740,000 would cover all of that in addition to some additional salary increases that we have needed to make to remain competitive and to keep some of our skilled facility team members onboard at the college. We are not asking for the county to fund all of that. We are asking that the county fund, $574,281 that you see there on the bottom line, and we would then move money from supplies and materials into personal services. We were able to do some things last year while the campus was primarily empty, there wasn't a lot of activity on campus. We have some new cleaning protocols and other things in place. We have been able to gain some efficiencies. We have reduced our contractual services, and we've really taken a hard look at our spending in those areas and believe that we can make those moves, not easily, but we can certainly make those moves. And we were also trying to make sure that we did contain our ask in all honesty, knowing that we are not quite out of this pandemic yet and not 100% sure where we were. We want it to be good stewards of our public trust and good stewards of our public dollars. In addition to that, you can see here that we are not asking for an increase in our regular capital allotment, and we are maintaining that at $455,000. And we are showing here the breakdown of how we would anticipate spending that $455,000. You can see in the first column, the way we spent the $455,000 this past year and the way we would anticipate spending it this next year, primarily on building improvements. We have an elevator, a very old elevator in our Almond Building that needs some work. We need to modernize. We need to modernize our building management system in the Green Hall Building, and another elevator as well that needs some work. We also have some very old aging vehicles that it is starting to become more expensive for us to maintain them, and so we are asking for three vehicle replacements this year as well. So again, you can see the increase that we are asking for, that bottom line there. I will go to the next slide and just briefly, a summary of our request. Again, anticipated salary increase for community college employees from the State General Assembly at 7%. We would ask that we would be able to give that same increase to our county-funded employees, five additional security officers to help us with our center management and to keep our employees and our students safe at $257,904. I should say that that 7% increase, again, we have not had an increase for our employees in two years, so that would be their first one. And then in addition, we were able to reallocate over $414,000 of supplies and materials to cover portions of those salary increases. And in addition to that, one thing I forgot to mention was that we would need additional contracted services and support services, maintenance and facility staff, and contracted services for housekeeping at our MAZES Woodruff Aviation Technology Lab and our Transportation Technology Center. I will talk to you in just a moment about MAZES Woodruff, but we are going to open that building. We have classes there in August, beginning in August. And we also do, we did move some money around in those line items to potentially see increases or cover increases in utilities costs as they come up. So again, our bottom line is that we are asking for $574,281 in new money, which is 7% salary increase to be held in contingency if the board chooses, and then five additional police officers. I would also just like to let you know that you will receive an invitation, I hope you've already received it from me, for our commencement service. I am thrilled that we are not virtual this year. We are in person at the Truist Winston-Salem Stadium on May 12. We are having two ceremonies at 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. We have over 600 graduates who are going to walk in those two ceremonies. We invited our class of 2020 to come back and have their celebration and the recognition of their accomplishments and achievements as well. And we will livestream. So in your invitation that you will receive an email, we will let you know that it will be livestreamed and invite you to participate in the livestream. If any of you are interested, we love having you there, and I know that you know so many of our community members and our students. So if you would like to attend in person, we would like to make space for you, space of honor for you in our commencement service. So please just let me know, and we will make sure to do that. And then finally, some updated photos from our MAZES Woodruff Aviation Technology Lab at the Smith Reynolds Airport, and I'm so excited to share these with you. Many of you, at least three of you, were able to visit our site with us a few weeks ago when Representative Patrick McHenry was here, and you saw very different buildings and classrooms and conference rooms. Those of you who are with us, the photo on the right corner is the conference room that we stood in that was completely empty at that time. You can see that much progress has been made. We now do have our temporary certificate of occupancy with our state final inspection scheduled, and we have been able to go ahead and move in and start the work on FAA certification to ensure that we are able to begin our classes in August. We will invite all of you to the MAZES Woodruff Aviation Technology Lab once again in August for an opening of our building and an opening of our program, and at that time, you'll get to talk with students. We are recruiting, we have students who are registered. We are very, very excited that we have been able to weather all that it took for us to get to this. It was a difficult building project, and there were some bumps in the road, but I'm very pleased to tell you that we are now moving forward. And I wanted to say thank you, because as you know, this building was funded with local bond dollars, and we greatly appreciate all of your support. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will end my sharing of the screen, and I hope you can see me now and hear me, and I would be happy to answer any questions. And just thank you very much for your continued support of Forsyth Technical Community College. We believe we are a place of promise for every citizen in Forsyth County and Stoke County, and we believe that we are using the dollars that you entrust in us to the best of our ability to make sure that we are providing excellence in learning, excellence in equity, excellence in completion, and excellence in post-graduation labor market outcomes. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Excellent presentation, Dr. Spriggs. We agree with everything you're saying, at least from my point of view, anyway. Thank you very much. You helped make us proud of our community, and it's just a little bit of pride that we need, but gosh knows with what's going on at Forsyth Tech under your leadership, there's a lot of pride to be had, and we very much appreciate it. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Dr. Spriggs?
I have two.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Spriggs, Don Martin here. Thanks for the presentation. I have two questions. One is, I followed pretty much, I think, your enrollment changes and percentages, but I wanted this, and this may not be like off-the-top-of-your-head comparison, but if your fall enrollment for 2021, you mentioned like a 9% increase in registrations, I assume, over spring. But I wanted to know if that were to materialize, the people as you stand right now, how would your fall 2021 enrollment compare all the way two years back to fall of 2019, which was pre-pandemic? What kind of numbers are you expecting? You used the word "new normal." I'm curious about how your new normal in expected 2021 fall and fall of 19 is.
Okay, that's a very good question, Dr. Martin, and I will do my best to make sure that I answer it appropriately. I cannot off the top of my head remember exactly back to fall of 2019, but what I believe the number that I shared with you that I received from my team in enrollment services reflects is that we are 2.5, I'm sorry, 9% in numbers of students. So that's about 230 students more registered now from where we were previous to COVID. So that number that I gave you should reflect an actual increase from pre-COVID. When I talk about new normal, I'm really talking about that we anticipate we will be back in full force in person on our campuses in the fall, but we also know that COVID has taught us a lot of things we want to forget, and it has also taught us things that we want to continue. And some of what we will be doing is offering more hybrid options for students. So that was the context of new normal. But I do believe that we are anticipating and projecting based on very early enrollment, and I do want to stress that because that 9% will fluctuate. We don't have payment for fall semester until after the fiscal year starts in July, and so there will be, and we are continuing to recruit and to actively engage with students. But what we saw in 2019 prior to COVID, and what we are now seeing continuing and picking up again, is more enrollment from, direct from high school. The students who are graduating from high school are choosing Forsyth Tech more, more students are choosing Forsyth Tech. We are also increasing our career and college promise dual enrollment FTE, as well as expanding prior to COVID in many ways in our short-term workforce training. So I will have another update for you, I think, in June, the end of June or July, when I come back for my regular update, and I will have much better information on exactly where we are, but the anticipation is we'll be up for 2019.
Good, thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
It does, it does. And basically, you're looking for a higher FTE this fall than it was in 2019, which is good.
That's exactly right.
So the second question gets with your security personnel expansion of five. And I'm a little curious, first of all, are these sworn officers?
Yes, sir, they are. We are actually a police force. We're one of, I think, five community colleges, larger community colleges, that have police forces.
So if my, and I may be incorrect, but having some familiarity with the law enforcement benefit packages, which I'm glad they're generous and recruit people into law enforcement and all those kind of things, but the benefit cost is way up there, and particularly with, you know, a fairly early retirement, when they retire, and what do you have to pay until they get social security? I mean, at the end-of-career cost, at least the experience I had contracting from the school district back with, if we were doing that, that's why the school district stayed out of police force stuff, was part of that huge commitment and cost. And even if we had a person that was sworn for the sheriff's office, then we were, as the school district, obligated to those benefits. And so I'm a little curious about that cost, which can be, it's not a cost right this minute, but there will be some cost later. And particularly since you have reduced your budget in a number of other areas to make this particular increase to be way more modest as your total budget increase, when those other costs start coming back, both the capital issues, supplies, and other things that are needed, and you're still going to have continuing cost of the security personnel, your law enforcement, your police force. personnel, your law enforcement, your police force. And I'm just looking at that down the road cost could be pretty substantial, and I probably, I mean, I, I think, I think there are a lot of pros and cons in police forces, and you've obviously been that, through that thinking, and you have one, and, and I, there's, I just, I probably just have a lot of, not for, this is a little too detailed for here, but just a few issue concerns on that, and particularly long-term projection of the cost of that police force.
Sure. So I would be happy to answer at least a small part of that, and then happy to have whatever venue is appropriate for more detailed conversation, Dr. Martin. But what I can tell you is that with our police force, I, my, and Kizzy is checking right now to make sure that I'm telling you the right thing, but we both believe we are. We, our police officers participate in the state retirement system just like every other community college employee. So they do not participate in the other.
The law enforcement retirement system.
I can't remember what it's called, but I know the one. Yes, yes, it's not, we do not participate in that. So when they work for us, they are college employees. It is a police department, but they participate in the same benefit packages as all other employees. There's no added cost for our police officers. Secondly, we do not anticipate the moves that we made coming back. You know, we have found, and I apologize for if I didn't clearly say that, we were not making that move temporarily and then planning to come back and ask you to give us that money back next year. We believe we have been able to gain efficiencies in many different areas and find ways to lower costs and find ways to do a better job at the same time. It's been a human's effort, so we've had some contracted services that we have moved around and things like that. So I do not anticipate that, and I do not anticipate those costs for the police force growing larger. I will tell you that from my experience, 25 years now in community colleges, three different ones in this state, this is the first one that we have had an armed police department, but it is, we're the envy of our sister institutions because it does make a difference. We have incidences that we need our armed security personnel to manage for us. Even in the wake of COVID, things have been even more stressful in so many ways. We have excellent officers who take the time to become a part of our community college family and get to know our students, and that really helps us tremendously with many different kinds of conduct issues and other issues that would escalate in other places that don't here, which is one of the reasons that we struggle with the fact that, but with that said, I would be happy to have additional follow-up conversation in more detail at the appropriate time, if you would like.
That was, that was very helpful, and I just may give you a call one day. No, but what's, the retirement system piece, being a part of the state retirement system is a huge issue, which is good, a pos, on the positive side.
Yeah.
So, and I appreciate your, I may have just missed your permanent, you're looking at sort of some permanent reductions in areas that you've had before.
Yes.
And I appreciate that efficiency. So I, I'm good to go, and I may just, I have a couple of minor questions I won't take the time on now.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'd be happy, just call me anytime.
It's two PhDs who love to talk about education. It's a lot of fun to listen to both of you.
Probably love to talk.
Any further questions or comments?
Chairman, I have one quick question.
Commissioner Tanya McDaniel.
Thank you. Dr. Springs, in your presentation today, I know it's kind of cliche, clicheous to say that mine is a terrible thing to waste, but I know that I had heard at one time that the tuition was possibly going to be free to some of the students, and I wanted to know in this package, is that possible? In addition to that, I want to say kudos, and I'm very excited about the work that's happening at the Maysie Woodruff, and excited about the enrollment that will begin very soon. So again, I applaud you for all of that work, but if you could answer that question relative to the tuition free for some, and is that wrapped up into this package, that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, Mr. McDaniel. So the Hope and Opportunity Scholarship is what we call it. It is called the Winston-Salem Guarantee Grant Money that came a couple of years ago now through, through DBNT at the time. And essentially, that money was for three years of high school graduates for any graduate of Winston-Salem Forsyth County School, any school. It was a last dollar scholarship opportunity. We have started implementing that money. So this next year will be the second year of students being eligible for that money. And what last dollar means is that they come to us, and we do a financial package for them that, that uses federal money and other scholarship money first, and whatever is left in tuition and books, and even some transportation and daycare money, we use that Hope and Opportunity Scholarship to cover it, to make it free for those students. So basically, you just, to get that money, you have to have graduated last year, this year, the next year from a Forsyth County High School. But what I will say is that nothing in this package has anything to do with tuition for students. What we have done as a college, though, is to utilize so much of that federal money to help our students with scholarship aid, tuition aid, money to help them stay in college, as well as our private foundation that has many scholarships, as well as all the opportunities that we have to find money to help students go to college. And we're hoping to be able to extend Hope and Opportunity and grow it even larger before that money expires at the end of six years, because it was for students for both years. So we are not seeing a tuition increase in the budget from the state. The state controls that in the General Assembly, and at Forsyth Tech, we are waiving fees using federal stimulus dollars to waive the fees to students for the next year so that they can get back to college and not. I hope I answered your question, but I'd be happy to provide additional detail. And I will just say as a follow-up, we are thrilled about everything going on in the aviation world and in how this, what this translates into for jobs, for students, especially students in the, in the East Winston District. We are working on a certificate program for Carver High School that will allow students to be a year of credit before they come to us, their two-year degree program, which will be amazing for those students. And so very excited and glad to hear that you all are as well. We could not have done it without your support, and we're thrilled about it.
Thank you, so very glad to have you, and I love your background screening. It's like a dream, and thanks again for making Forsyth Tech a place of promise.
Additional comments or questions?
Thank you.
Dr. Janet Spriggs, it's an excellent report. We appreciate it. Forsyth Technical College is really being guided right now by a lady that gives us great comfort to refer to Forsyth Tech as, as the place to go in our county. Thank you so much. Dudley Watts, we have.
You're so welcome, Mr. Chairman.
We have six public hearings to be briefed on for this, for the next, I think it's the 20th of May, right up the board, so you've got a lot to talk about.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon again. We'll introduce these items for the May 20th meeting, and then the only other item we have today are some closed-session items regarding attorney and client privilege that our county attorney will take us through. So I'll go ahead and dive into the proposed agenda for May 20th. The first two items are old business, kind of carried-over items, the public hearing in connection with the financing, the courthouse facility, colladium, and the airport projects, and then the economic development project that was discussed previously. So we'll carry both of those two over. Go ahead and dive into items three, four, and five, which are all planning matters, and Aaron King will take us through those. Item three is a public hearing on a zoning petition of Jimmy Lee Barra from AG and RS20 to RS30. It's F-1600, and I believe Aaron already grabbed the screen, so Aaron, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dudley.
Commissioner, Commissioner Linville.
Before Aaron gets started, this zoning matter adjourns some property that I have. I've talked to the county attorney about it when I learned that the matter was going to be up for zoning, and I will discuss the matter further with him before making a decision of whether or not to vote when it comes up for a vote.
Appreciate your transparency. Okay, Mr. County Manager.
Aaron, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay, you have the floor speaker. Our volume's not terrific, but we'll try to adjust it on our end.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Can.
Thank you, Dudley, and good afternoon, Chairman Pliler and Commissioners. As Dudley introduced it, this is zoning case F-1600. And before, on the screen there is our location map with the subject property shown in yellow. This is on the east side of Reedville Road, basically between Reedville Road and Old Flat Rock Road. This is north of the town of Walker Town. And the request is to rezone, the majority of the property is zoned for agricultural, and a portion of it is RS20. The requested district is RS30. It's just under 34 acres in size. And you can see on the aerial image there, the, the subject property is primarily undeveloped at this point. You can see the zoning and allotting and the development pattern within the area. A couple images, this is looking into the site from Reedville Road, and this is on Old Flat Rock Road. The site is to the left. This is an image, this site lies within the boundaries of the Walker Town area plan update. You can see the, the area there outlined. It is, it's basically shown for large lot residential. Quick summary, the site is located in a transitional area between RS20 and Ag zoned properties. The estimated trip generation between proposed and existing zoning is pretty comparable. We're only talking about a difference of about six more homes. And the site has access to public water. There's no public sewer this far out, but there is public water, and it has extensive road frontage. This request was heard by the planning board at their April 8 public hearing. There were five speakers in support and one in opposition. That person was just having, had an inquiry about access Reedville Road. After hearing that, the planning board voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this request. I'm glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. King.
All right. Item four is also a planning matter, and so Aaron will review this. It's a public hearing on a zoning petition of David G. Williams from RS40 to NO-S Neighborhood Office. It is zoning docket F-151601. Aaron.
Thank you, Dudley. So here's the location map for zoning case F-1601, and you can see the property there in yellow. It's just under 20 acres in size. It's on the south side of Stires Ferry Road, just kind of, you know, where Center Grove Church is. That would be just out of the screen to the bottom. This is kind of in the western part of the county. You can see it's currently zoned RS40. There's a little mixture of zoning out here between Ag, RS30, RS40, and there is a piece of GI zoning, General Industrial, just north of this site. Here's an aerial image showing the subject property outlined in yellow. You can see it's primarily undeveloped at the current time. There's a small pond in the, in the lower portion there. This is looking into the subject property. This is on Stires Ferry Road. The subject property would be to the left, and this is looking across Stires Ferry Road. This would be the GI zone property that I referenced earlier. This site lies within the boundaries of the Clemens Comprehensive Plan. Their plan recommends rural preservation for the subject property and basically the greater area here, west of Lassiter Road. This is the site plan submitted with this request, so north would be to the right in your image there. You can see Stires Ferry Road. What's proposed is basically keeping the majority of the site intact. There would be one drive, one access drive extending from Stires Ferry Road into the lower portion of the site. It would make use of the one-story existing building there. It's about 3,000 square feet, about 10 parking spaces would be installed, and the proposed use is office, it's an attorney dispute resolution center in our ordinance. It just falls into the office category, but that's about the extent of development proposed for the site. So the approval could establish a precedent of non-residential zoning in the area. It's not consistent with the Clemens Comprehensive Plan, and I think they provided some comments in your report where they're not supportive of the request. The proposed site plan does keep the majority of the site intact, as I showed. There's really minimal modifications proposed through this site plan, and, and this is one of the rare occurrences where a non-residential zoning actually does a pretty good job of preserving the rural character because it, it doesn't propose any additional development on the site. This request was heard by the planning board at their April 8 public hearing. There were five speakers in support, no speakers in opposition, and the planning board voted six to two to recommend approval of this request. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. King.
All right. Item five is the last planning matter. It's a public hearing on a zoning petition of Tammy F. Weevil and Timothy J. Weevil from AG to LIS. It is zoning docket F-1602. Aaron.
All right, thank you again, Dudley. Subject property here, shown in yellow, 10 acres in size. This is basically in the southeast quadrant of High Point Road and I-74. So Mark Maria Quarry would be the GIS zone property that's directly across the street from the subject property. Everything on this side of High Point Road is zoned agriculturally. This is an aerial image looking into the site. You can see it is primarily undeveloped as well. Again, you can see the quarry activity happening across the street, and then I-74 just to the north. Some photos, this is on High Point Road. The site will be to the left in this image, and this is looking into the subject property. This site lies within the southeast Forsyth County update. It's proposed for large lot residential there. If you look at the image, you can see there's a blue boundary around this greater area that does call out this area as being appropriate for business park development at some point in the future should public sewer be made available to this area. Here is the image of the site plan submitted with this request of High Point Road is obviously to the left in this image, one access point coming into the site here at the southern edge of this, about 15,000 square feet of proposed building with a 12,000 square foot expansion shown, parking in the front and to the side, and then the proposed storage area. This use is for building contractors, so this would be storage of materials in the back. It would be fenced in, and you can see the gravel area shown there. Storage water controls located on the far eastern portion of the site. So in summary, this is an intense industrial activity. There is an intense industrial activity located across the street. That's the quarry that I mentioned earlier. The area plan doesn't support the industrial zoning that's proposed at this time. I'll mention the CEDA requirements here shortly. That's a special intense development allocation. The site's location doesn't preclude industrial park development if sewer is provided. It is located on the edge of that larger area, and the request would allow for additional business development. So this request does include a CEDA. CEDA stands for Special Intense Development Allocation. This site is located in the Abbott's Creek watershed, which restricts impervious coverage of 24%. This site proposes 53%. And so you have a limited amount of CEDA acreage you can allocate to projects that want to go above that 24% threshold. And the UDO sets for findings from which that decision is made, and I won't read these, verbatim to you, but these are the five findings that should be met. The proposed project is in conformance of legacy. The land use and site design are compatible with the surrounding area. There's a significant economic benefit in terms of retaining jobs or increased tax base. Doesn't propose a threat to the environment, especially water quality, and the site has good transportation access. So those are the findings for which CEDA decisions are made. This request was heard by the planning board at their April 8 public hearing. There were two, there were three speakers in support and two speakers in opposition. They voiced concern about an access easement, I guess, that runs through this property, onto property that they own. Planning board did vote five to three to recommend approval of the zoning request and the CEDA for this item, and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
I have one, one question. And the question is, how does the, not sure how the easement, the access easement issue by the two property owners, will they still, did they require that to get out of their property, or will we be, what's, what's the resolution to that?
Yeah, Commissioner Martin, that is, that typically ends up being a civil matter between the two parties. That's, that's not something that staff researched. Certainly, the, the attorneys for the applicant and the existing property owner on the call have heard that, but that is, that's not something that staff typically, or the board typically gets into when there's that easement matter between the two parties.
Additional questions? Thank you, Mr. King.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item six is a public hearing on the Public Art 2020 through 2030 Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Plan. You've got an associated resolution that would adopt that public You've got an associated resolution that would adopt that public art plan. And I believe Kelly Bennett, who is in the planning function, but has sort of leads the public art efforts with our planning development department, is on the line. Kelly, are you there? I see his screen pop up, but I don't hear Kelly. He's on.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Kelly. Thank you.
Wonderful. And you see my, see my screen? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This public art plan was facilitated by the City-County Public Art Commission, which is appointed by the commissioners and the city council. And the plan would set the agenda for the next ten years of city and county public art investments. It has five goals, and it has project recommendations, which are locations and ideas for public art. There's a strong case to be made for public art. It defines a sense of place and creates pride in the community, and also attracts visitors, increases foot traffic in downtown, and the length of time and money visitors earn there. And investment in public art is also an investment in local jobs, even when a piece is made outside of the county. There are certainly a number of people, as you can see here, when the library piece was installed, a number of local people working on projects like that. This shows our peer cities, public art administration. You can see Winston-Salem here, public art budget, how it lines up with other communities. One thing that a number of communities do is they have a percent for art ordinance, which allocates a certain percentage, usually about one percent, of construction costs to public art on certain capital projects, such as library or a county courthouse. And that's very important because that is one of, one of the goals of the plan. Goal one is to include public art in future city and county investments, such as parks, libraries, recreation centers, greenways, and streetscape improvements. And that would make it easier to plan for public art as projects move forward instead of, you know, coming in, that as the project finishes up to add public art, you get integrated into, into the planning of the project. Goal two is to increase public art funding for projects at existing parks, greenways, libraries, municipal buildings, downtown, and in neighborhoods. Goal three is to help foster a local public art economy that develops local artists, fabricators, and other related businesses. Has a number of recommendations to help do that. Goal four is to raise community awareness of City-County Public Art Program. And goal five is to care for and manage our growing public art collection. At current staffing and pre-coronavirus funding levels, Public Art Commission is likely to complete twelve to fifteen public art projects over the next ten years. With recommended larger budget allocations and percent for art ordinances, the number could easily increase to twenty-five, thirty projects, possibly more. And the plan goes on to outline a number of public art projects for the next decade in downtown, parks, greenways, communicate with, honoring significant people, public facilities, and other special projects. This public art plan's been in the works for a number of years. Brainstorming and visioning by the Public Art Commission began in twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, we had three in-person public meetings and an online survey that had hundreds of participants. And then the draft plan was presented in the summer of twenty twenty. We had seven public input meetings, a couple that were in person, and then others that were online. Public Art Commission recommended adoption of the plan in October of twenty twenty, and the Winston-Salem City Council adopted the plan in April of twenty twenty-one. I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments? Thank you very much.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Fleming Elamene.
I wanted to know if the city was involved in the mural on Seventh and Patterson. It's right before you get to the overpass there. This is a beautiful mural of the businesses that existed on Depart that became Hudson Avenue. Were you involved in that project?
No, that, I believe, was an innovation quarter project, and the innovation quarter is part of their contract, I believe, with the city was to install public art in their development, and that is, that is part of that. So I think that was an excellent mural.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dudley Watts.
All right. Agenda item seven of the minutes, and those will be forthcoming by our excellent clerk. Item eight is the public session. Item nine is an amendment to the FY twenty twenty twenty-one budget ordinance. It increases revenues and appropriations for the Forsyth County Department of Public Health for Epidemiology and Communicable Disease Branch funding from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Adam Pindelberry is on the line and will review that. Adam.
Good afternoon, county manager. Can you hear me?
Speak up if you will. It's a little bit low.
Sure thing. Commissioners, the item before you is a budget ordinance amendment to accept three million sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. These funds are part of agreement addenda five forty-three between Forsyth County Department of Public Health and NCDHHS. These funds can be used for COVID-nineteen response and mitigation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this item.
Questions, comments? No, sir, not on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Items ten and eleven will be reviewed by Paul Fulton. They are, item ten is an amendment to the State Public School Building Capital Fund Grant Project Ordinance that closes the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen school bond issues arising from the two thousand six construction bond. And then you've got a resolution ratifying and authorizing the joint applications by Forsyth County, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools for four million two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars from the Public School Building Capital Fund, which is essentially the education lottery fund. So turn it over to Mr. Fulton. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can.
Okay. When we passed the two thousand and six bond referendum, we made a commitment to use lottery proceeds to offset debt service. So what we're doing here is closing out last year and reopening a new year. It typically runs into four to four point three million dollars a year, and this is the process the state has for us to get access to those funds. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Questions for Paul? Not a one.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And item ten really is the cleanup of the accounting of the, closing those other bonds. But item twelve is a resolution changing the name of the Coronavirus Relief Fund, Special Revenue Fund to the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund. Lee Plunkett should be on the line for that one. Lee, you there?
Good afternoon, engaged commissioners. Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you. This item before you now has two parts. A is a quick housekeeping item, and B is an amendment to receive federal funding. So in A, this resolution asks you to change the name of the Coronavirus Relief Special Revenue Fund to the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund. So one year ago this month, the county received what was called the Coronavirus Relief Fund at the time from the CARES Act. So as we created the appropriate special revenue fund to account for the receipt and expenditure of those dollars that we received, we named it the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So as more sources of funding have come in from different pots of money, we decided to expand the name to be a more appropriate, a more general name to cover all that we're, all the funding that we receive in order to respond to the pandemic. Are there any questions about this name change?
Questions or comments? No, sir. Thank you.
And then item twelve B is an amendment to the fund we just discussed to properly account for the seventy-four point one million dollars the county will receive from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. This act was signed into law on March eleventh. The total act was one point nine trillion, and as it trickled down to us, the counties, our portion is going to be exactly seventy-four, one forty-three, seven sixty-one, but that is an estimate according to the National Association of Counties, so it could be different than that. And the U.S. Treasury is, is going to send these funds in two different rounds, the first being possibly honor before May tenth, is what we're hoping. So we're wanting to get this amendment in so that we can properly account for what we do receive. The second round is going to be sent no earlier than twelve months after the first round, and then deadline to spend these funds is December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, so roughly about three and a half years. We are currently still waiting on, on the U.S. Treasury Department to issue detailed guidance on what those allowable expenditures will be. So in this amendment, we're just putting the funds into the budget reserve until we're able to provide you with a guidance in order to make decisions on how you'd like to invest this fund. I'm happy to answer any other questions I can.
Questions or comments? No, sir.
Thank you, Lee. Item thirteen is also going to be briefed by Lee as the resolution approving an installment financing contract and providing for the financing and refinancing of certain projects as set forth therein and related matters. Lee.
Yeah, so this item before you, it's a resolution that approves installment financing contract and related documents and agreements that finalizes the sale of the limited obligation bonds. And of course, those bonds are for the courthouse, colliding, and airport projects. And it also includes the refinancing of the PNC Bank Draw Program Loan and the two thousand nine and two thousand twelve limited obligation bonds. So in order to provide the final approval, this resolution does quite a lot. First, it provides the general background of the sale and the related projects and proposed refinancings, which, which we've gone over. Next, it identifies the primary parties needed for the transaction, including the financing corporation that our bond council has spoken to you about and who the underwriters are. Then it calls your attention to all the documents, or as they're titled in this resolution, instruments that have been made available to you as part of this agenda items. Do you notice the total packet just for this item is almost two hundred and forty pages? And these documents are still in draft form, or we're working through with our underwriters council and bond council and all the different parties. But they in substance lay out, you know, what the county is entering into to sell these bonds. And so you'll find quite a few instruments. So you'll see the, the contract, the deed of trust, the indenture of trust, escrow agreement, the purchase contract, and then the preliminary official statement. The resolution also notes that the public hearing, you know, was just held, and that the county has filed its application with the L G C, which we have. And at the end of the resolution, you're going to see ten defined sections, and most of these sections just deal with each of the documents that are a part of this financing, and it authorizes the designated county representatives to execute each. So there is a lot there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Questions, comments?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Elamene, would you explain what the Forsyth County Financial Corporation is, please?
So in my, in my layman's terms, the way I understand it is the, the way our bond council interprets state law is that to issue, to sell limited obligations in the financial markets, we need a third party to help us do that. And so this is essentially just a, a third-party corporation that is part of, it's a, it's a part of the financing that they, we are, we are in contract with them, and they are in contract with the underwriters to sell the bonds, and then they essentially pass over all the duties to us as part of these agreements.
Yeah, Commissioner Elamene, this is Paul. What it really does also is serve as a bankruptcy shield. It gives potential borrowers a route to get to property should we default on the bonds. And so that's really what, what it stands there as, is it shields them from us trying to go bankrupt and not pay our debt. Excuse me, Lee.
No, you're good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And we can get clarification from bond counsel, Commissioner Elamene. That might be the, we were doing this because we were told we had to do this. Would be the real layman's term part of it, but we can get, we can get clarification. Any other questions on that? Thank you, Lee, and thank you, Paul. We have two items, items fourteen and fifteen, that Deputy Manager Chantel Robinson, an outstanding woman in business, is going to present to you. Item fourteen is a resolution approving the distribution of real property plan and authorizing county managers to submit such plan. And item fifteen is a continuity plan, really all geared around the, our disengagement process. I'll turn it over to Chantel.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So I'm going to provide a brief update on our current disengagement process from Cardinal Innovations to go along with the agenda items. So since the last time I came before you on February eleventh, the board did vote on March fourth to proceed with disengagement from Cardinal and realign with Partners Health Management. We did open the public comment period on March fifth, and it closed yesterday, and I provided all of you with a copy of the public comments. We will also publish those on our website. The county, we did convene a transition planning team. We've met twice so far, on March twenty-sixth and yesterday. This team meets every month on the first Wednesday of the month at one P.M., and it is comprised of everyone who really can represent the community. So we have myself, the DSS Director, Assistant Health Director, Mental Health Association, a judge, chief court counselor, a DA representative, sheriff's office, Novant and Baptist, the I D D Advisory Board Chairs, two C F A C Chairs, the Mental Health Substance Use Committee Chair, and a Provider Council Chair. And so with all of those representatives, we should be able to ensure that we are serving the needs of the residents to ensure a seamless transition. We did host a community conversation on April twenty-eighth for providers, consumers, and stakeholders, and had over a hundred individuals registered. Commissioner Martin provided a welcome to the group, and this was an opportunity for the community to ask questions, for us to clarify any concerns that individuals may have had. As I stated, the public comments will be published on our website. We will actually try to get them up there today, and they do have to be posted for thirty days per state statute. Since the last time we met, Cabarrus and Union Counties did receive Secretary Cohen's approval to disengage from Cardinal and realign with Partners effective September first. Stanley County did submit their disengagement package to the secretary, and they're awaiting approval to realign with Partners. Orange County requested to realign, and their public comments are currently posted on their website for their thirty days, and they plan to submit their package by the end of this month. Mecklenburg County requested to become their own managed care organization and has been in various negotiations and conversations with the state and Cardinal. I'm also aware of at least one other county that may be soon requesting to disengage as well, and there are several others that's in wait and see mode. We do continue to engage in meetings with NCACC and other counties and Cardinal's catchment area to discuss the various challenges. Some are more severe than others, and we do continue to engage in dialogue and work with Cardinal staff on a regular basis. They are our L M E M C O today, and we need their services for the residents of Forsyth County, and so we will continue to collaborate until this transition is approved by our commissioners, all of you, as well as the secretary. So the items before you, I have a distribution of real property plan. It is required by state law that we submit this plan as part of the disengagement process. Forsyth County and Cardinal own no real property together, so we have no direct interest in the other's real property. Cardinal is currently a tenant in one of our buildings, and so if this transition occurred, they would be permitted to terminate the lease without penalty. And the continuity of services plan is another item before you that the state law requires that we submit as part of the disengagement process. We do recognize the importance of ensuring that behavioral health services for our community is uninterrupted and provided with high quality, timeliness, and a focus on community involvement, and Partners has committed to ensuring all current providers contracted and in good standing and serving our county will be contracted with Partners as well if they aren't already. standing and serving our county will be contracted with Partners as well if they aren't already. And many providers are already contracted with Partners. And they do intend to honor consumer service authorizations, annual plans, and other documentation and decisions essential to ensure a smooth transition. So just to talk briefly about the public comments that I did provide to you via email today, and as I stated, they will be published on our website hopefully later today for 30 days. But there are three major response areas. So we had about 127 responses, and they're broken kind of into three areas. Individuals who are just concerned about transitioning and the timing of the change. And that's a valid concern. There's a lot happening right now. We know that this is a huge undertaking. But for staff's perspective, the timing really is the right time. We're going through Medicaid transformation. If this was to be approved realistically, the effective date would probably be January 1, 2022. The tailored plans begin July 1, 2022. So that would provide our residents with six months to be transitioned with partners, who would then provide them with those services as well as the services within the tailored plan. Then there are individuals who want to proceed with disengagement because they are dissatisfied with Cardinal. And then there's a group of individuals who appear to maybe have responded due to Cardinal's public relations campaign. I know many of you have seen their various pop-up ads. You can barely scroll through a news article without seeing ads that says "Help Forsyth County" and the negative impact that disengagement may have to our most vulnerable members. They do appear to be primarily targeted to our IDD population. We know that there's been other focused meetings and dinners and other PR tactics that they have used. And so there are individuals that have responded that appear to not know who Cardinal is at all and thinks the county commissioners are trying to disenfranchise the IDD population. And we know that is the last thing anyone's trying to do. We are trying to ensure that our residents receive the services that they deserve. And then there are individuals who think that we're trying to remove services. And I do want to make sure people understand this is not removing services. Mental health services will continue. The providers will continue. It is the managed care organization that would potentially change. And so I also wanted to make sure that the Commissioners were aware that there is legislation pending, that it would possibly have a moratorium on all disengagements. And so this legislation essentially says that beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2026, so five years, no county or Board of County Commissioners would be allowed to disengage from an LME MCO and realign with another LME MCO. So this is pending. And so for us, it provides some uncertainty. Time is of the essence. And so if the board decides to proceed with submitting the continuity of services plan as part of our package, that would be your last board action for staff to continue and submit. And so for us, because we know that moratorium is pending, it would be imperative for us to get our packet into the secretary prior to June 30. And so our target goal would be June 15th, just to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. And then the secretary would have 90 days to provide a decision to us. And as I stated, ultimately, the start date would be the secretary's decision, but we would anticipate it would be around January 1, 2022. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Chantel?
Just one question, please.
Commissioner Al Amin?
Has our lobbyists been on board to make sure our delegates in the General Assembly are aware of what we're trying to do with Cardinal?
Yeah, I don't know that that's been a specific focus of hers, but she's certainly been in tune with, she understands what we're doing, and she's been in tune with legislation, that particular legislation that Chantel just showed. You know, at this point, it is not necessarily a legislative matter. There's really, once we get the information in, it'll be up to Dr. Cohen. And Dr. Cohen has, maybe if you want to characterize her comments to us in a small group, she's...
Yeah, so in our small groups, we had a meeting with Secretary Cohen, as well as the counties and Cardinals catchment area. And it was prior to her making a decision on Union and Cabarrus. And so at the end of the day, I think we probably have a 50-50 chance of receiving her approval. I think she is concerned about the stability of the catchment areas in general. I do think, though, that getting the packet in prior to June 30th is paramount to even have remotely of a shot. And so from our perspective, our packet is going to be almost identical to Union and Cabarrus County. And we as staffers actually have gone over and beyond some of the things that they have done. And so we feel like we will be able to present a very strong and compelling packet to her. And so it'd be interesting, I would be interested if she didn't approve it, why not?
And she said to the group that pretty much what that legislation says, that if they came in after end of June, that she was not going to approve them, and her basis was stability within that system. So there is some uncertainty in exactly where we are right now.
I'll just say, I appreciate all the work you've done, Chantel, and appreciate you sending us all of those 127 comments to take a look at, along with the advertisements, the statutes, and staying on top of this. That's a lot of, it's important to stay on top of it. And we asked for people to respond, and we've heard from them in a public meeting, and we've also received comments during the comment time. So I think it's been very helpful, and I read through several, about four handfuls today, and then I'll finish the whole thing and looking at it. So I do appreciate you making it easy for us to see those, all that information and feedback.
Good job, Chantel.
Chairman, if I may, I wanted to say congratulations to you on your recognition, my leading lady of Forsyth County. And Dawn, I also wanted to, Dr. Martin, I also wanted to bring to your awareness an issue regarding the spirit around Cardinal and access for those youth that are in the detention center and the bed access. So if you can research to resolve that, if in Cardinal's commitment, I would hopeful that they would try to resolve that for our constituents. Those children should not be in the detention center. They should have access to beds. So I wanted to bring that awareness, and thank you for allowing me to share. Thank you, Chantel, for all you do.
Thank you.
I introduced her with that recognition in jest, but the truth is, we're just glad that the Business Journal recognized what we already knew.
Yes.
Agenda item 16, a resolution by Forsyth County approving the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds related to the settlement of opioid litigation. I'll turn it over to County Attorney Gordon Watkins.
Thank you. This is a really groundbreaking agreement. We've been working on across the state with the NCACC, which would allocate the proceeds of any national opioid settlement among the various counties and cities in North Carolina. Seeing as how it's 436, I think I will come back next week and give you a more detailed presentation on this, so we're not here all afternoon.
God bless you. Thank you so much.
Good job, Gordon. Okay. Item 17 is a resolution selecting and authorizing execution of an agreement with Shellco LLC to act as design builder and provide design and pre-construction services for the Smith Reynolds Airport new corporate hangar project. I think this is going to be a joint thing with Mark Davidson, Airport Director, and James Anderson in General Services manages our construction. I think Mark's going to tell you about the project, and then James is going to tell you about the contract.
Good afternoon, Mark Davidson, also avid pickleball player. I'm telling you, if you need a lesson or want to learn the rules, I'm your guy. But what we wanted to do today is just, Dudley thought it'd be wise to come in front of you and just show you what we, plans are always changing at the airport. And we have a couple slides I just want to go through. Can they see them yet? Or, there we go.
No.
Do I need to do something up here?
Yes, okay.
But the first slide's about the steps taken by the county. You know, a couple months ago, we went for approval agreement with Walter Robbs to start the terminal building design. The county commissioners also approved, or you're working with Lee Plunkett and Paul with the limited obligation bonds. And then the other one was, we just came in front of you recently with the Signature Flight Support, the consolidated and restated lease agreement with Signature Flight Support, which included some lease rates for the hangars we want to construct. And so what I want to talk about today real quick is the, the next item coming, or the item coming in front of you right now, is about corporate hangar development. If you recall, we had two hangars in the plans, and this first hangar is in Signature Flight Support's leasehold. And we already got them to the rate of $11 per square foot, includes demolition of an existing old hangar. And these pictures are taken from the terminal building looking out. That's the old hangar that was built in the '30s, as well as that brick building in the lower right side there. These are aging facilities, and we're going to demolish them so we can build that hangar 20,000 square feet and some ramp construction. The second hangar is a little bit different. There's some artist renderings of the first hangar. The second hangar, this is where it's gotten a little tricky. Since Signature only signed up for one of the hangars, we still want to proceed because there's such a market demand for a second hangar, so we're looking outside of the leasehold development and could have go to Dudley for, we looked over the airport layout and some of the locations with minimal, you know, that we could actually do. And one of them is to, the building at the corner, 3817, used to be Piedmont Aviation Components. What we're looking at is demolishing that facility and building the second hangar there on the corner there, 3817, right next to the lower parking lot of the terminal building. And so we've been trying to, for the past five years, ever since Piedmont Aviation Components vacated that facility, we had Meridian look at it, help us try to lease it. It's not a very desirable space. Kirby and General Services, Kirby Robinson, also listed on LoopNet. We haven't had anybody interested in it. We do have one tenant who leases an office and a conference room, and so we can, that's the Wells Center. We can relocate Peggy. I think she'll be open to finding some other space in the airport. But with that building and the shape that it's in, we spent about $30,000 on operating and maintenance costs on it, plus it needs a new roof, about a half million dollar improvement there. Makes sense for the board to consider demolishing this building and building the new corporate hangar on that site. And so I'm going to show you this next slide, and to give you, if everybody can get their bearings right, you can see the terminal building. You can see my mouse right there. There's the terminal building. This is North Liberty Street, right here. And so we're talking about the first hangar right here at this location, and then the second hangar at the corner here, 3817. And that gray area is new ramp. So aircraft could taxi down this way to taxi lane Kilo, and then access the second hangar from here. This design also allows the two facilities to avoid what we call FAR Federal Aviation Regulation Part 77, which are, you don't want to just have a telephone pole off the end of a runway. There's imaginary surfaces around the airport. And so this plan backs up the hangars, so they're not penetrating any of those imaginary surfaces, because they have changed over the years, missed approaches on that runway 1533. And so these are the two proposed locations for the hangars. And James is going to show you, or the selection of Shellco next, but I can address any questions. This last slide is just some additional considerations. For those that might recall from my last presentation last year, each hangar is going to fit about nine aircraft on average, depends on the size. The county's going to experience some new annual personal property taxes, the county around $397,000. Fuel flow, we get 10 cents a gallon for received fuel in the field, so that'll be about $30,000 annual to the airport. And these two corporate hangars, we looked at about positive cash flow in year six. So airport revenue would cover the debt and creates new revenue source out the airport. So anybody have any questions about this slide? I know it's kind of...
Questions or comments?
Just one question, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The new hangar, how many planes can we fit in that one, Mark?
Yeah, each one about nine. It depends on if it's like a big Gulfstream, you know, the big tail and long wingspan, it'd be less, but that's about the average, it'd be about nine. To give you an idea, when you, for you go out to, I think, the New Forsyth Tech Aviation Center, I think that floor plans about 24,000 square feet, and it's pretty big, if I remember right.
Additional comments? Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is a resolution to select Shellco LLC as the design builder and authorize execution of a contract for pre-construction phase services for the new corporate hangar project. In accordance with North Carolina general statutes, City-County Purchasing advertised a request for qualifications for design-build services. We received 12 responses to that RFQ. A selection committee comprised of General Services staff and airport staff carefully reviewed and scored the responses. And the top four design builders that were invited to interview were Frank L. Bloom using Lindsay Architecture, J.E. Dunn using DWL Architects, Bobbitt Construction using Triad Design Group, and Shellco LLC using Walter Robbs Callahan &amp; Pierce Architects. After completing the interviews, the selection committee ranked Shellco as the most qualified design builder for the project. J.E. Dunn was ranked second, Bobbitt third, and Frank L. Bloom fourth. Following the selection of Shellco LLC, General Services staff negotiated a pre-construction phase fee of $610,000 with Shellco. This is approximately 8.9% of the construction budget, or 7.7% of the total budget. At the completion of the pre-construction phase, Shellco will prepare a guaranteed maximum price proposal. If that GMP is acceptable, then we will bring back to the board a resolution to amend the initial contract for the guaranteed maximum price. Total fees for design and construction are not to exceed $7.5 million. And then the remainder of the funding that the board has approved will be used for construction contingency, construction materials testing, and then miscellaneous expenses. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Did a good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just clarification that that percentage fee includes the design and construction.
Good.
Nice piece. Thank you, James. Good job there. All right, we have two property matters, and Chelsea Swaim will take us through both of them. The first one is a resolution authorizing the grant and execution of an easement to Piedmont Natural Gas to construct and access pipelines at Union Cross Road. Chelsea, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As I mentioned, this is to grant the execution of an easement to Piedmont Natural Gas Company for pipelines and appurtenances to transport natural gas. This is at the 1931 Union Cross Road property, and it is for choices development there at the property and the changes that they're doing for the preparation to open their operations and their program there. And this does include our language that we normally put in easements, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments, Chelsea? No ma'am, did well.
Great job. And item 19 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance and installation of donated artwork from the University of North Carolina School of the Arts. Chelsea, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This item is to accept the artwork and the installation of it, and this will be at the Walter Marshall Social Services Building. And the artwork from the University of North Carolina School of the Arts is to memorialize the facility's history at the Kate Bedding Reynolds Memorial Hospital. It includes five panels of figure of staff who trained or worked at the hospital, and it's called "The Present Absence" and created by artist Owens Daniels. And UNC School of the Arts received this grant for the commission and installation on behalf of the Witten Thalen Forsyth County Public Arts Commission. It will be installed on the side of the building, which is visible from Cleveland Avenue and the Malloy Jordan Branch Library. Included in your packet is an image of the mockup and what the final product will look like. However, what you don't see in your packet is the actual donation agreement. We are still tweaking some of the terms with UNC School of the Arts, but in the interest of time and the School of the Arts not losing the grant funding, we did want to go ahead and get it on your agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chelsea, I was glad to hear you say the Walter Marshall Building. He deserved that. Questions or comments? Good job. Thank you.
I do encourage you to look at the mockup.
Yeah, I do encourage you to look at the mockup, and we'll make sure we get a blown-up version of that, so that you can see what's going to be on the front of that building. So, thank you, Chelsea. Nice job. We're winding it down. Item 20 is a resolution approving refunds by the tax assessor in collective amount of $2,913.03. If there are any questions, we can direct them there. Item 21 is a resolution designating an official to make recommendations to the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission on ABC permit applications. That is pretty straightforward. Randy Hunsucker, the business manager at the Sheriff's Office submitted that. Randy, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, Dudley, I'm here.
Okay. Any additional things you need to talk about regarding that?
I'll make it very fast. It's just, we'll designate Chief Deputy Rocky Joyner to be that official who will make recommendations to the commission. It was previously handled by Brad Stanley, who retired May 1.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Randy?
Not a one.
Randy, thank you. To finish it out, item 22, liquidity services operations sold asset report. We like providing that to you in a report every month. Then obviously, you've got your quarterly fuel surcharge report for franchise garbage collection services. And, Mr. Chairman, that's it for that agenda, and the last item I have is just a closed session motion.
Go for it. We're ready.
Nothing else for the Board? Don't want to shut you off. Okay. Need the Board to consider a motion to go into closed session, discuss three matters to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. Which privileges here I acknowledge pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1183. Since there are no other businesses coming forward to the Board of the meeting, file the meeting to close, the meeting will be adjourned.
Motion from Ted Kaplan. I'll second it.